Before we convene meeting here, I would just like to remind everyone that we are being televised on SCTV and they are recording the proceedings as well. May we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is anyone here to make a public comment? Okay. We'll defer the media, I guess, the minutes until our next meeting. Town manager report.
Can you hold my reports for a little during the meeting? That's okay.
Sure. Okay. Correspondents' Statements and Announcements. All right. I have a couple if you don't mind. School committee met last night. Let me just dial back to October 22nd, the meeting when Bert Fisher announced his retirement from the committee. While a public forum statement was made at that time thanking Bert for his concerns and his service to Sandwich, I would just like to reiterate that feeling tonight. Thank you very much. Then last night, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents allows each district to recognize one student per district who has demonstrated distinguished academic performance as well as personal contributions to their high school community. The 2025 award in Sandwich was conferred upon Brianna Prindle, a senior at Sandwich Middle High School. Congratulations. And the Forestale Garden, through the effort of Senator Dylan Fernandez and in coordination with Cape Cod Foundation Fund for Sandwich, will receive $30,000 to reconstruct the 25-year-old facility, which provides a deeper connection for students to the natural world as well as opportunity in partnerships with the Mashpee Wampanoah Tribe to provide locally grown produce to a community garden farm stand and the Sandwich Center for Active Living, who provides summer help at the school. That's just great as well. The Ellie Gaffney Community Pool at Sandwich Middle High School is currently serving 850 participants in aquasafe programs. The school system has developed a capital request, which will be up for further discussion in the future for the 2027 budget progress. Other events, the Sandwich Police Department greeted 1,500 guests at trunk or treat hosted at Heritage Museum and Gardens with assistance from the Sandwich Citizens Police Alumni. Going forward, Thursday, 11/13 at 4:00 PM, the Moderator's Special Town Meeting Preparation Meeting will be held at town offices. And then Monday, 11/17, that's 7:00 PPM, Special Town Meeting will be held at the Sandwich Middle High School. Anybody else?
Just a quick mention, and an important mention actually, that Veterans Day is on Tuesday, November 11th.
Thank you.
So certainly want to recognize and thank those who have served, but also to inform and remind the community that there will be a service here at Eaton Memorial Square adjacent to the historic Town Hall, hosted by American Legion Post 188, starting at 11:00 AM. So I'd encourage you to come down. I'm sure that it's going to be a very nice service as always.
It always is. Yes, indeed. Now, on to staff meeting. Director of Natural Resources, Dave DeCanto. Assistant Director of Natural Resources, Jenna Silva. Leslie Fields of the Woods Hole Group. Update on various beach and natural resource projects, 2025, 2026. Shelf fish beds updates and openings, et cetera. Invite the group to make yourselves comfortable, just make sure that the green lights are on the, on the mics.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I might make one of the representatives a little bit uncomfortable, I wanted to just, I think you all will want to make a comment or two. This is our Director of Natural Resources' last meeting with the Select Board and coming to the close of a wonderful and distinguished and varied career with the Town of Sandwich. And I was able to make some comments at our Department Head meeting, which Dave has heard me say numerous times since I arrived here. And they really are, and it is just the embodiment of the Town of Sandwich, that the, his personal dedication to not just acquiring and supporting and maintaining the incredibly precious open space that we have here, but focusing it on making it available to the public to use and enjoy. And that is something that not every place does, that they make the commitment to ensure the community knows where to walk, when to walk, improving the trails, making sure they're accessible, having appropriate signage and parking, and all the things that really are hallmark of this community. And really putting that at the fore of the Department of Natural Resources. And we all know that the regulatory work is important, it's necessary, it is the thing that protects those natural assets. But all the work that they do in the department puts, you know, the human experience at the forefront and the preservation on balance with that. And it really is an important thing that you don't see in every community. And a lot of that has to do with Dave's leadership over the time that he's been here, both on the Conservation Commission and as our director. And we heard a lot of really nice things the other day, and I just wanted to start the choir this evening and recognize that. And I know he has some really important news for us this evening as well, and this is a really great opportunity to capstone his time here. So thank you, Dave.
Very important, and we thank you very much.
All right. Do you want me to start, or?
Yeah. So I'm just going to just preamble. So being the Sizemay Swanson, we figured it was time to come in and update you with all the different projects that we've been working on with Woods Hole Group. So there's a myriad of projects from working down at Town Neck to Lower Schaum. And then I'm going to talk about shellfish after that. And I have a big announcement, and I have a mic drop at the very end. Not hearing? Okay. A big mic drop at the end for the shellfish. But Leslie's going to, this is Leslie Fields from Woods Hole Group that we've worked with for years, and I'll let her take you through the different projects.
All right. Thank you, Dave. And I would just echo what Heather said, that Dave is great to work with and just a great steward of all the natural resources in the town. It's, as Heather said, it's not, you don't see it in every town. So I'm sure you'll be sad to see him go. All right. So Woods Hole Group has been working with the Town of Sandwich on a number of projects that have been dealing with coastal resiliency and ecological restoration. I'm going to take you through sort of a series of those projects and let you know, you know, the work that's been done and what the next steps are if we're continuing work there. So first, next slide. Okay. So this is just a map that shows the different sites we've worked on. There's the Town Neck Beach Site, which I know you're all familiar with. It's a dune and beach restoration site. There's the Scusset Beach Offshore Borrow Site. That was a subject of the Corps of Engineers Section 111 Study that Woods Hole Group designed and permitted, and then Corps of Engineers used about a year ago for beach nourishment. There's the Old Sandwich Harbor Dredging and Nourishment Project. There's the Schaum Pond Water Quality Improvement Feasibility Study that we conducted. And then lastly, there's the Jones Lane Scorton Creek Culvert Replacement Project, which is also ecological restoration project. So I'm just going to walk through each one of those projects and tell you a little bit about it. The Town Neck Beach Project is something that we started working on back in 2014, so during the period 2014 to 2019, we designed and permitted that project. It is a project designed to enhance the resiliency of the barrier beach in that area. After we did our work at Woods Hole Group, the Army Corps of Engineers came in and made a slight modification to the footprint as part of the Section 111 Project. That's the area that's outlined in sort of red there. It's a little bit wider at the, I guess, western side in front of the homes there. So there was a slight difference in the footprint from what we designed. The beach has been nourished at least six times, I think, maybe Dave was thinking, maybe more, since 1990. The focus of most of those nourishment projects has really been, you know, on the part of the barrier beach that fronts the parking lot. Although, as you know, the most recent project in 2024 and 2025, conducted by the Army Corps of Engineers, included that entire length of beach. So that's the Town Neck Beach Project. And I think the next slide talks a little bit about, yeah, the Scusset Borrow Site. Again, Woods Hole Group designed and permitted this borrow site. It's offshore of Scusset Beach. Most recently, the Corps of Engineers came in and dredged that borrow site and pumped 320,000 cubic yards of sand from the borrow site to Town Neck area. So that sediment was placed in the area between Treehouse Brewery and the end of the boardwalk. And one thing I wanted to emphasize is that, you know, all those smaller projects that the town has been doing all those years in front of the parking lot, those are great, and you should keep doing those when you can and when you need to. But we all know that sort of the longer the project is, the better it is, and the longer it lasts. So that was the benefit of that project that the Corps did with that big volume of material they could bring in from Scusset. I will say, however, after being there on site and after looking at some of the post-construction data, that a lot of that sediment was really weighted towards the upper side of the beach, so the dunes and the, sort of the high tide beach, as opposed to the nearshore area where it was originally designed. And as a result of that, there's been quite a bit of scarping and more erosion of that beach than you would have expected if it had been built according to design. So that's kind of unfortunate. All that material that's eroding and being, is being sort of washed offshore, and because of the direction of longshore transport, it's sort of moving to the east over to Sandy Neck and on.
So just a quick question. So whose design, so I'm assuming you're saying it was the Corps of Engineers change that did not follow what was recommended, and now we have more erosion than was expected? Or what was, I mean, you could have predicted it, and that's why you designed it the other way, and they decided to not do. What was their, just curious what the thought process was?
They didn't really give us an answer. And of course, communications with the federal government has gotten increasingly worse since then.
Sure.
It's January 8th. We believe because they wanted to stay away from some of the environmentally sensitive areas, they just pushed it closer to the nearshore, the existing dune. I think it's twofold, though. I think one is they didn't use the design that Woods Hole Group came up with. The other part of it is, don't forget, this template is 10 years old. And I believe there's been enough erosion where, you know, you see how much we put in, 320,000 cubic yards. I think it really could be closer to 500,000 cubic yards if you really wanted to do it the way it should be, where it was, it was going to come out on a short shelf, come down long, came out of shelf again. And you see the groynes, the groynes should be covered halfway with sand. Patrick, sort of was like when we were kids, you know, that's what I envisioned. And so I think that's the other half it. I mean, we're happy for the amount of sand, but they did not place it the way we asked them to.
Yeah, I think that's exactly it, Dave. And I mean, I don't even know that they built it according to their own design, honestly. So.
We have the data for that? Is there, was there surveys done or something like that where we can?
There was, we do have a post-construction survey of the beach, but we haven't, at Woods Hole Group, we haven't really dug into that yet. But that's something that, you know, we've been talking with the town about potentially getting out there and doing some additional surveys.
They also, the Corps owes us some more data as well. One of the other things, if you remember with the Section 111, remember there was $12.5 million for the project? It was bid out at about 10 million. We still haven't had the final accounting. If there's money still left in the account, as long as the Section 111 is open, it can be used. The hope was that when the canal needs to be dredged again for maintenance, five to seven years, they could then go and grab that sand as well. Because as Leslie was saying, you know, we had hoped that both the canal maintenance dredge and the Section 111 from the borrow site would be together. You know, that's where you get really the best bang for the buck, and it lasts the longest. So we're still waiting for that accounting, too. Keep in mind, they were done January 8th, and there was, there's been very little communication from them.
I got a question.
Sure.
We've been at this project for some time. I've been on the board for nine years, and it's almost been that much time that we've been on this. Now, I had Representative Xeros, Cape Cod Commission, Mike Miller, myself, were down there, met with the people. I took pictures. I had eight feet of clay from Bay Beach Lane to White Cap Path. And we went to a study, Woods Hole Group was supposed to be the independent contractor that was set forth to take test borings. Independent, you people, said there was no clay there at all. I had pictures of eight feet of clay from one end to the other. So it was determined that they could not put any kind of a barrier, rocks or anything up there to hold that beach. Those people down there spent thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. I was down there today, there's two to three houses already for sale, people are just going to bail out of there. Now, we had this project put forth. It was a great project, we had a lot of sand. We've had no big storms this year, we've already lost 15 to 20 feet. What can we do? And I'm asking you as a selectman in Woods Hole Group, what can we do to keep this sand there? I've had people from Florida send me pictures of these pyramids, they're probably five to six feet tall, they're made out of cement, they have holes in them. And the waves hit them, break up the waves, and the water goes through them, tends to save the beach. Is there anything we can do? I mean, I just feel that we're just fighting a never-ending battle here. We're throwing our money away, right into the wind. Townspeople are starting to ask, I'm getting calls, what can we do? 15 to 20 feet gone. I mean, in reality, we're just pissing our money into the wind.
Yeah. It is a really tough, it's a tough situation. I will say that the method you're talking about, I think you're talking about something called reef balls, which are sort of, it's, you can put them out sort of in the nearshore area, it helps to break up the wave energy and you get less erosion. I don't, have never seen them used in a situation where you've got a tide range like you do here in Sandwich. So you'd have to have, you know, I mean, they've got to be emergent when, coming out of the water in order to help break the waves during a storm, and then also at low tide. So they'd have to be really large structures. Not seen anything like that permitted in Massachusetts. So I think that's, that would be a really difficult sort of project to pursue, and I think we'd need to study sort of the efficacy of it as well.
Yeah. I see, last winter, I see on TV, I see Duckberry, all those places up around the shore up there. The storms are coming, the storms have been, you're seeing the town bringing in equipment, sand, rocks, whatever they got to do to try to help, help the towns up there. Here we are in Sandwich, we're not doing that. So can you come up with a plan to try to save what we got there?
Well, I think one of the plans was, is the beach nourishment. And if it's built according to plan, it will provide protection. But beach nourishment is not just, it's not going to hold the line in the sand, you've got to keep maintaining it. And then that's sort of, that's.
We have the canal, hopefully we're going to get that.
Right. So it's a combination of the Scusset Borrow Site, the canal, and potentially Old Sandwich Harbor. You have sort of a source of, three sources of sediment that you could keep using to maintain the beach. And if it's built according to plan, you know, then we think that it could provide, you know, quite a lot of protection. But it's not, you have to keep maintaining it.
So Dave is leaving, he's been right on top of this, so can you report back to us? We're trying to come up with something that we can try to save what we got there?
Sure. I mean, we're working with Jenna, you know, Dave's, you know, is following up in Dave's footsteps, so, you know, we'll be, we'll be helping the town on that and working with the, with the town staff on it.
Okay. And not to create another diversion, but you mentioned Old Harbor.
That's coming up.
Okay.
Okay. It's coming up.
So Chairman?
Yes.
So just one comment. One thing that we've talked about internally is the future viability of the Scusset Borrow Site. And we think there's some hope that that is filling in at a rate faster than we expected. So that might be a more significant continuous source of sand for this site. Of course, the mobilization of that is a challenge, but it looks like that might be something that would be a positive.
Yeah, I agree with you. Yeah, yeah. All right. So one of the other things I was going to say just about, you know, the Town Neck Beach and this, and the nourishment site that the Corps filled with sand, is that Dave hopes, or the town hopes to be able to plant some of those areas up in the dune this coming spring with beach grass to help, you know, stabilize that beach area. But we don't want to go in and do it now because it is eroding so quickly, don't want to put it in and have it just get washed away. We're going to wait till the spring, I think. All right. Next slide. One of the things that we have to do as a part of the permits for the Town Neck Beach is we have to do monitoring. And so the permits require monitoring of the Rocky Inertidal Shore resources offshore as well as eelgrass surveys. So we've done Rocky Inertidal Shore surveys in 2018 and 2023, and then we've done eelgrass surveys annually in conjunction with Department of Marine Fisheries since 2017. So we've got some of the results there, just on the slides. The intent of those surveys is, in fact, to evaluate whether there's some sort of adverse effect of the nourishment on those resources. So far, we haven't seen any dramatic significant changes in them. So I think, you know, what's been going on has been fine. We do know, however, unfortunately, that the permits that we received for the town to put material on Town Neck Beach, all but one have expired. So that's something that, you know, we're recommending to the town, and I think the administration is on board to refile for those permits. And I don't want you to think that they lapsed because we were neglectful or forgot to extend them. We extended them as many times as we could, and they reached the end of their lifetime, and now we have to refile. So we do have a proposal into the administration for costs associated with refiling for those permits.
When you apply for those, who are you applying, like, whom are those being applied to?
So there's one to the Conservation Commission. That one is one that will expire in 2028, but I believe we can get an extension on that.
And that's local?
That's local, yes. There's one to the Mass Division of Fish, Marine Fisheries, Natural Heritage, or MESA Program. So that's having to do with protection of the shorebirds. So.
And just a point of order, every time we have put sand on the beach, and we, then we check with eelgrass, we check with the birds, we have more wildlife than we had before.
Yeah.
So it's trying to walk that fine line of the people that, you know, you're doing with the permits here that are trying to protect these things, and we're trying to show them, every time we put sand, we get more of what they're looking for.
One of the other permits we need is a DEP Chapter 91 permit, or placing fill in Commonwealth tidelands. We also need a CZM federal consistency, and then an Army Corps of Engineers permit. The funny thing about all those is they all have different expiration dates, you know, so the Army Corps permit you can get's a 10-year lifetime. Chapter 91 is a five years. So we have to sort of, they're sort of staggering expiration dates, and we monitor those for the town, and we'll let you know when we need to extend them. But right now, all four of those last ones, with the red check marks next to them are either have expired or will expire in the next month or two.
And what's the turnaround time on those?
For getting, filing them again? I think if we were to file them, you know, early in, you know, 2026, or even starting in December, you know, we could, we could probably have them by the time you might want to nourish again next fall. Like, you're not going to be able to nourish this winter, but you're not going to need to, right? Because you just had all that material that the Corps brought in. So you're in a good shape there, but it would be, put you in a good position to be able to nourish next fall if you have to. Fall, winter.
I got a question. White Cap Path, so the west of White Cap Path out in front of the beach is that small jetty that goes out there? I was told, is that jetty pulling the sand away from the beach?
I wouldn't say it's pulling it away, but it's sort of preventing the material from moving naturally from west to east.
So if that jetty was removed, would that beach be getting, keeping more sand?
No.
No.
I think it would, it would cause a pretty big change in that whole area right there. I wouldn't recommend removing it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And if you remember, when we did the Section 111, that was one of the things that they looked at, was removing all those groynes and was cost prohibitive. Also, not sure at this point who actually, you know, is the property owner of the groynes because the state will tell you it was the Corps, the Corps will tell you it was the state, the state will tell you it was us. But I know what you're referring to. You know, back when we did some of the early modeling, it was, it almost looked like there was like a whirlpool effect that sort of dragged everything there. That's what he's referring to.
Yeah, yeah. And you can kind of see it in that image up there on the top. There's a lot, there's a big offset between the west and east on that one groin. But I think if you were to remove it, you, there would be a pretty big change in the shoreline in that area, right where those homes are sort of the closest to the water. Okay. So anyways, that's it for Town Neck Beach, and we hope to be working to refile for the permits for the town, you know, as soon as we can, as soon as we can do that in 2026. The next slide just talks about the Scusset Borrow Site. Again, that's the, that's the area that was used for the most recent nourishment that the Corps of Engineers used, it's offshore of Scusset Beach. There are requirements in those permits, that that borrow site needs to be surveyed, so a bathometric survey of the borrow site annually for a period of six years, or if we can show that it's filled back into its pre-dredge conditions. The Corps of Engineers has already done one post-dredge survey, but they will not come back in and do others. So it will be up to the town and their consultant, hopefully Woods Hole Group, to go out there and do, you know, additional post-construction surveys. And as Heather said, we, you know, we expect that we're going to see that area filling in more quickly than we had, you know, predicted.
And just another note there, when we did it this time, Great Lakes who did the dredging came up with a lot of cobble, big stone like this. Those have all been removed. So now what you have is basically a container of sand, which I think will make it easier to take sand out in the future.
One of the other things that the permits require, and it's shown in that sort of graphic on the lower right, those yellow shore perpendicular lines, they have requested beach profiles be done twice a year for a period of six years, or again until the borrow site is filled into pre-dredge conditions. And the purpose of those is to evaluate whether or not dredging a hole in the nearshore impacts the waves enough to where there's some sort of change in the sediment transport along the shoreline, and, you know, whether or not there's some increase in erosion of that area. We don't expect it to be true, but they wanted, wanted everyone to, you know, monitor it and check. So that's something that needs to be done. We'd love to be able to do that for the town, and we'll be giving the town a budget for that, probably with annual, sort of annual budget, so that if we don't have to go out six years, we don't need to. So.
Use drones for that?
We would not use a drone for the, no, probably not. We have used drones and are thinking of doing it over on Town Neck, we wouldn't do that here. So, actually, I take that back. We could do that. We could do that. So maybe that will be something we'll look at. Yeah, might save some time and money, yeah.
It's big drivers.
Yeah, yeah. Good idea. Just a note here, those permits are good anywhere from between 2029 to 2034, so you still have some good time left on those permits for dredging. All right. Next project is Jones Lane Scorton Creek. So Jones Lane was a spot that was identified during the municipal vulnerability preparedness study and by the Cape Cod Commission as a low-lying road that's vulnerable to flooding. Because the culvert underneath the road is undersized, the upstream salt marsh is impaired, and so are, you know, sort of ecological resources, shellfish and herring. So it is a salt marsh restoration improvement project as well as a resiliency project. The town has been working on it with the Cape Cod Conservation District, and Woods Hole Group has been, you know, helping out with a design in addition to an engineering firm called Stan Tech. We are hoping to be able to complete the 30% design this fall. And that design includes changing the culvert from a six-by-six culvert to an eight-by-15-foot culvert. We'd also be elevating the road to minimize flooding. We'd also be elevating the road to minimize flooding and then building a small earthen berm. You can sort of see it in the graphic. They have that little purple area up near the junction of Jones Lane and Route Provided we can get that 30% design this fall, completed this fall, then we would move into 90 to 100% design in the spring of 2026. That would all be funded by Cape Cod Conservation District. Do you guys have a match on that, Dave?
Yeah, we do have a match of 300,000, but it was a $1.2 million grant from the federal government from agriculture, believe it or not, because of the segregated shell fishing beds. It may go up to as high as 1.8. They said there is more money if we have cost overruns. But yeah, the town only had to have a match of 300,000.
We've already done that.
Yeah, we've already done that. Yep.
And what, does that take you all the way through 100% design, that 1.? Okay, all right, okay. So that's the schedule. We're hoping to be able to complete that 90 to 100% design this spring, coming spring. And then we would start the permitting in the spring and the fall. The funding's already been secured, as Dave said. Construction funding after the permitting would be from Cape Cod Conservation District, maybe also a match from the town, I'm not sure.
Yeah, what's going to come out through the design is they're not going to pay for the whole length of road. They're going to go 100 feet each side of the culvert and the town will be responsible after that. But it's a huge, it's a huge improvement for this area. As you remember, the, the big nor'easters in 15 and 17, this had several feet of water over it for a period of time and no one can get in to those homes on 6A or people are getting out. Because once that happens, don't forget at the town line, we've got another low area where the great marsh sort of touches our marsh. There's another three feet of water that goes across there. And then you've got the Scorton Creek Bridge. So it affects quite a few people. When we did the MVP certification, this was the number one area that people pointed out.
It'll help fragmities too.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, yeah.
Especially in the east, this east side to it 6A.
Yeah, that's, that's a huge benefit of this project.
And you can tell just by observation, if you stand at the, at the culvert and you look west, you can see how few fragmities there are looking back. You turn around and look the other way, how grown it is. I just want to say through this whole process, we've been very sensitive to, this is an area where a lot of people like to pull off the road, watch the sunset, go fishing. None of that will change. Everything of that nature has been saved during this process.
And the only other thing I'll add about this is that the funding is federal funding. So right now, we are on hold. So that's why I say, you know, we hope to be able to complete the 30% design this fall, but we're not allowed to work.
From NRCS?
From Cape Cod Conservation District. So if we did work, we would, it would be on, we wouldn't be able to get paid for it.
Reimbursed. It's, it's not reimbursable if they do the work. Yeah.
Yeah, so we can hope that the government is up and running soon.
Yes.
Okay, next slide. Old Sandwich Harbor. I'm going to preface this one by saying this is, this is the most difficult project that we've had to work on for you guys. Mainly because just all the sensitive resources, shellfish concerns, bird concerns, all sorts of things. So this is a dredging project. The purpose is partially beneficial reuse of that dredge material on town neck and Spring Hill beaches to build resiliency for those beaches, but also to enhance water quality and the health of the shellfish resources in the harbor. And I understand that Dave's got some exciting information to tell you later on about that. So, you know, that may dovetail into this project. We were last working on this project in 2021. And during that process, we looked at a number of alternatives for dredging, came up with a preferred alternative that would provide about 66,000 cubic yards to be placed on the two different beaches. It's been a while since we've been working on it and we'll, you know, to reinitiate work on this project, we need to go back out and collect some new field data, sort of more modern field data. And we need to do a little bit of redesign based on that field data. And then we need to move forward with the permitting.
And keep in mind, the idea on this was if we're going to be dredging the canal every five to seven years and reusing that material, this would sort of be in between those time periods to keep some, we would take the sand and put it on the backside of the dune on either side of Old Harbor. I spent some time on the County Dredge Advisory Committee. We now have this project on there. I've had the dredge manager look at it, identify that there would be a project that they could do. Because as you probably know, having the county dredge do it would be a lot cheaper than having another outside concern do it. So even though this one sort of sat idle for a while because we were concentrating on the big town neck beach project, we did learn some things and identify where we can probably take the sand from here. And we've got a few things lined up. So it's not like we're at square one. You know, we were a little bit farther ahead than we were before.
That, I think that you, if you resurvey this today, because we go in and out of there sometimes with our boat and, you know, really not less than, you know, half tide because it goes dry at this point. And you can walk, you know, from one side to the other, really without even getting mid shin deep on some of this. I think that what you're going to find is that the sand is pushed way further in than, because if you go beyond where the white is on this, which is the, I think the extent of the sand, I mean, it like way up in is, I mean, feet and feet and feet of sand.
Yeah.
It's staggering. I think even the 66,000 yards is light. I mean, there is so much sand in there that's getting choked off that I think it would be, I think it would be staggering to see what the current survey looks like versus the survey.
I think if you go on Google Earth, just over the last 25 years, you'll see it filling up with sand. The thought here was we've identified this area where it looks like they're going to allow us to take the sand. We've got the project lined up with the county dredge. I think we could then expand it later on to maybe look at that other sand. I would love to have it come all the way down near the boardwalk, honestly, and uncover some of those shellfish beds that keep getting smothered.
When is this, because I know when we had talked about this before, that this was kind of a pipe drain to be able to get this permitted. What's the likelihood, like if you had to put a percentage on it? I hate to do that to you, but I mean.
It's the likelihood that we can permit it?
Yeah.
I think we can get it permitted. I mean, I think you've got a 95% chance you're going to get it permitted. Is it going to be easy and smooth sailing? No. But, but as Dave said, we really, we ironed out a lot of the, addressed a lot of the questions and concerns early, early during the first part of the project and sort of stayed away from the areas that the agencies were most concerned with. And, you know, you're saying there's a lot of sand in there. We probably could get more than 66,000 if they let us go in there and take everything, but they're not going to. So.
What's the timeframe for dredging that out, rough?
It all depends. It probably about a week's work. If we use the county dredge, it all depends upon their schedule. So it may not be all 65,000 cubic yards at once. It could be like 30,000 one year and then 30,000 another year. But the actual time period to do it would be about a week.
And then as far as, I'm sorry, like timeframe, when would you think that this would get permitted?
So right now, we need, we need additional funding if you want us to proceed. We've got about $32,000 left in our existing contract. It could be applied towards this or something else the town needs us to do. Assuming that, you know, you do want to move forward and we get some additional funding, I would say, you know, you would probably be ready to dredge in about three years.
Whereas, and that's on the schedule like right now for the county dredge? Because they go out five years?
You know, two, two, two to three years. Two is probably ambitious, but. Okay. And then the last project is Lower Shum Pond. That's a study that one of my coworkers at the office took, took charge of. So it was a feasibility to just look at ways to improve the conditions in the pond. As I'm sure you all know, there's a history of algal blooms and, and, you know, mucky sediments and sort of nuisance algae that grows in there. We went in and did a sediment sampling program and a vegetation survey back in 2024. We looked at a number of alternatives for improving the health of the pond and those are listed there from alum treatments to dredging to hydro raking or aerating the water or some sort of biological or microbial treatments. And we evaluated each of those alternatives against a range of factors. So cost, maintenance needs, impacts to abutters, how difficult it would be to permit, you know, how, how, how effective each alternative would be in actually cleaning up the pond. And what we came up with was that, you know, one alternative is basically do nothing. Number two is the alum treatments. That's probably your best bet if you want to do something. Number three is hydro raking. And so I know that you have another, you had some other comments about this, Dave, if you wanted to add.
Yeah, so it could be a combination of alum treatment and the hydro raking, specifically in strategic areas.
Yeah.
We really do feel like we can improve it. We took a look at the inside of Shum Pond here because I know Dave Mason and some of the work that he's doing with the wastewater, took a look at all the water that's going into the ponds and that's why we thought we'd take a look at the pond itself. But we think between a combination of alum treatments and hydro raking, we could really improve the pond. I'm not saying we could totally get, you know, rid of all the issues because that's a very complex thing with the water that's entering, entering the water that goes in there. But I really think we could improve. You know, everybody knows what I'm talking about. We have that icky look and icky smell, but this year was not as bad, but it can be bad in, in, in years past. So what we would be looking for, the board tonight would be just sort of a, give us a nod, like let's go forward with this, next step.
So that's all I really had. I don't know if you have any other questions you want to ask or want to mull it over.
Mr. Chairman? The only comment that, but ask that I do make is we have funding to keep some of these moving along. In order to accomplish all the tasks that we've talked about, we'll need to look at replenishing the beach funding through the CPA fund. The money that we get on an annual basis won't support all the work that we need to do. So he wants us to keep in mind that as we evaluate all the needs that we have in the town, that this is CPA funds is a source that can support all of these efforts.
I got a question. This summer, Shum Pond over here, we didn't have that green, a lot of green, smelly crud that we had the previous year. Why did we not have it this year?
Honestly, I think it was, you know, they don't know for sure. Because sometimes when it's cool and dry, you don't get the algae. Sometimes at the, at the wrong possible time, you get heavy rains with nutrients going in. What this would do would be to sort of take care of some of the nutrients that have embedded themselves in the bottom of the pond. So when you get like that tipping point of the nutrients coming in, you wouldn't have as, as big a bloom like you've seen in years past.
We were so dry this summer.
Might have been a.
We didn't have a lot of that flushing nutrients into the pond driven by big rains.
Yeah.
I actually had to raise the pond a couple of times because it was so low.
I'd say it's encouraging, but it's really frustrating to hear. At the same time, it's good work. It's things that we need to do. But, you know, going through the list of permits, the time, the amount of money that it takes, and at the end of the day, it's kind of like, you know, it's almost like the trust is not there where you have to use the, you know, the surveys to say like, nothing's changed for 10 years. The eel grass is in the same spot, give or take. But we surveyed again for $50,000 a clip or whatever it was. And then you come back and say, no, it's, it's still there.
Yeah.
You know, it's just, it's like three years to permit the dredging of the sand that you knew that got blown in, that you were taking out sand that was on the dune last year. I just, you know, stuff like that, just, you know, it's frustrating.
It is frustrating. I will tell you, sitting as the chairman of the dredge committee for several years, we've worked very diligently with some of our state reps and federal reps to try to work on the permitting process. The, the Corps is really where the holdup is. Because everything sort of, all the commitments and all the compliance sort of goes through them. They are improving, you know, up until they, we had this shutdown, but they had, we had seen improvement and it's something that the county has taken it up to. Mark Forrest has done a lot of work. We've had several permitting regulatory summits with federal and all the different regulators. So it will get better. I will say that doing nothing is not an option. If you remember why we, you know, look at the barrier beaches, it's because it protects downtown. It's not for the beach. It's not for the, you know, for the people that live on the water. It's to protect the town. And with all the work that I've done and we've done with MVP, if you look at any of those models, if there's any beach there at all, even at 2100, it affords protection of the town, believe it or not. It is very, very important work.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? I had two questions. One, Leslie, is the, the work on the options for Lower Shum Pond, is that a continued permitting work on that, that we would need to get the permits in place to do that work, correct?
We would, yeah. I think we wanted some indication from the town as to whether or not, you know, which alternative they wanted to pursue. And then we would go about, you know, putting together the permit applications.
We use wastewater funds to fund the project, the study.
I guess my last one wasn't a question, it's a comment. When I, when I see this presentation, given the presentations that we saw five years ago, there has been a lot of work that's been done and a lot that's accomplished. And, you know, four years ago, you didn't have a permit for dredge spoils from the, you know, the regular dredging of the canal on town neck beach. You didn't have the, the sand that we have out there. You didn't have the potential or even the possibility of, you know, 60,000 cubic yards from Old Harbor. So those are all really positive things. I mean, we know that the system is going to continue to change and we're going to have to continue work on it, but we've made, we've made some progress. Thank you.
Mr. Rose?
This, I, I think this project needs to be taken out of and dealt with separately than the other projects, largely because there's a lot here. And it treads on other areas. For example, where this is the pathway of herring. So when we develop ideas about solving this problem, we have to integrate that into this.
Yeah, definitely.
That has to be the driver for this. It would be like, to me, the most significant driver for it.
Absolutely. And Marine Fisheries would have to be involved in this. But keep in mind that as that pond goes through eutrophication and starts to fill in, we have less and less habitat for herring. Now, the good news is we do have some other things going on like Jones Lane, which we can introduce hopefully herring into a small pond over there. There's a, there's work by the state going on at Nye Pond where they're going to lower the road eventually for that dam and connect Nye Pond so we can have herring there. But this is our main herring run. I'm very much aware of that's part of it. You know, we did it because I had the availability of working Woodsole Group and the knowledge of, of the pond. But I'm not, you know, if we wanted to take this off and make it like part of wastewater or a separate project, that's, that's fine.
No, I'm just saying that it, it, it's too important, a project to be blessed along with five or six others. Hey, let's keep going on this. We haven't discussed this project. I've been on the board a number of years and we've never discussed this. So.
Maybe we should.
So we, as the decision makers for the community, haven't even had a chance to even.
Yeah.
Evaluate any one of these or maybe all of these. But part of this was what was a question that I have. And I think with, with something like this, there are going to be really long-term, really expensive solutions that we will slug through in order to achieve that objective. The alum treatments, hydro raking, I have experience with that in Brewster. And here, that would be tough. But, but my question is, all of these require community involvement.
Yeah.
Community hearings, people to recognize. And yet there are really simple things that we could employ, which I think we, I'd like to see us. The aeration is very simple, relatively easy to permit and would make a real impact on particularly Lower Shum. And draining the pond during anticipated deep freezes is another thing that works. If you can anticipate when we'd have like a 72 hour cold spell and you drain the pond down to mud, the, the, the plants can't hold on to the bottom. So when you refill the basin again, they let go of the bottom and go right out into the salt marsh. That could be done with some regular. That could be done with some regularity going forward.
As you remember, we did that when we rebuilt the dam.
Yeah, but it's, that's the kind of thing that you've got to do all the time. We can do it once in a while, but that's why I think this requires a lot more thought by us and by staff, or I'd like to see us do it.
I agree with you, there's a lot of different issues here than the other coastal sort of projects. I would encourage you to, you know, make sure you have looked at the report. You know, that details all the work we did, and maybe, I don't know if we looked at any of those other alternatives you're talking about, but, you know, I would encourage you to take a look at it.
Okay, good.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. I guess your excuse is...
Thank you very much.
Oh, okay. You can sit up here if you want, that's fine. You want me to go, Mr. Chairman, do you want to go right into shellfish?
I do. Thank you very much. This feels informative, they're complex issues, and thank you, I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you for having me.
Thank you very much.
So, I don't have any slides, but you do have a handout as far as the shellfish. So normally this time of year, I'd be coming to you asking for permission to open the shellfish beds, specifically down at Mill Creek, down at the boardwalk, when the testing comes back from Marine Fisheries. What I've been quietly working on for the last 10 years is opening up a portion of Scorton Creek. And I can tell you that we have been given the green light to open this year. So when the testing comes, we've been doing the testing for 10 years now to get the testing. It's not the whole creek, it's going to be down from Cravens Landing, if you look down towards the bridge, it's just the first couple of turns. But it's a huge, huge win for the town, because Marine Fisheries does not just open up beds anymore. There's a concern with their resources being the laboratory, the biologists, and I made it, I made a deal with them so they couldn't say no. About 10 years ago, I talked to them and I said, how can we get Scorton Creek open? And they said, well, you've got all these little tributaries down at Mill Creek, what about those? And I said, well, we can, we can close those, because no one can get into them, they're so mucky, you can't put shellfish, they're dangerous to go into. But how can we get, because we needed to do the testing in the time of year that it would normally be open. If you test in the summer when it's normally be closed, it doesn't count. So what we did was, we came up with a very novel thing. Instead of just letting the fisheries biologists go down and test like they used to do, and waiters, we take them out on the boat. And we get the testing done at Mill Creek, and we get the testing done at Scorton Creek at the same time that we used to take somebody on foot to just do Mill Creek. So I just made it easy for them, they just couldn't say no. So I, we went into the records, they're not great, about when this was last fished. I've asked a couple of the locals. We pinpointed somewhere in the 70s probably was the last time it was fished. So you think about this, this is a huge win for the town. And I wanted to be able, my last meeting here with you guys, I wanted to be able to do something that would drop the mic, get everybody's attention.
Okay.
So you'll see in the, in the sample motion, it does include opening up a portion of Scorton Creek.
Okay, Bob.
Awesome.
Yep. Okay. I move to adopt the proposed 2025 shellfish license fees, no changes, and to authorize the shellfish constable to open said areas to the harvest of all shellfish once the mass division Marine Fisheries has received acceptable samples. Said opening shall occur no earlier than December 7th, 2025. Said areas shall close when deemed appropriate as a shellfish constable, no later than May 31st, 2026.
Second.
Motion by, by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I just had, I forgot two more points. So we haven't put, we're not going to be putting any oysters down in Scorton Creek, it's just too hard with the tide down there. What we've been doing this year, along with growing oysters, and by the way, we have a plus 70% yield over last year's oysters, so it's going to be a great season. We've been growing some immature cohogs. And the idea will be to open up Scorton Creek now for the shellfish that exist, and then we will be seeding it with cohogs for the future. It makes the most sense down there, and Division Marine Fisheries was very happy with that approach. So people will be able to go down to Cravens Landing, use that as the landing spot, and the regular shellfishing rules will take effect. We're going to be doing a little test digging in the next week, and is going to get her first test digging, to see what's actually there, to get a report out for people. But it should be a lot of fun, and having another area in town is huge for us.
That's fantastic.
Do we have any soft shell clams down there? We're used to.
We're hoping, you know, hoping that was soft shells and possibly razor clams.
Yeah, we're used to back...
I know there's definitely cohogs, I know that there are in the approach, you'll be able to get some sea clams at the very low tide, I'm just not sure about everything else. I've actually taken samples all the way up to Jones Lane and found cohogs all the way up to Jones Lane Culvert.
Okay.
Thanks again.
Thank you very much. Good luck in your retirement.
Thank you, Lee.
Okay. Next, we're going to have town planner Steve Tucker, Mark Horrigan, want to come up?
Good evening. Steve Tucker, town planner. My first time before you, so I want to express my thanks for your support to bring me on board in February, at town manager's recommendation, I appreciate that, substantially important to me. So, to address the matter at hand, we've had, we've been approached by a developer to talk about what's called a local incentive program, affordable housing development. It's a provision under 40B that operates slightly differently than the process that more frequently has taken place in town here. That being where the developer goes to the state and gets a project eligibility letter, and then comes back to the town. In this instance, the developer comes to the town first, through the select board, to see if the project is one that the town wants to collaborate on. If that's the case, the board could have a vote to do so, and then the developer goes to the state, Executive Office of Housing and Louisville Communities, goes through their process, and then comes back to the town to go for a comprehensive permit before the zoning board of appeals. So steps are slightly out of order, it's a little more expeditious in some facets, particularly through the state, but there is still that comprehensive permit at the end of the process that allows the zoning board of appeals to review all of the issues that may be in play and protect the town's interests. So the specifics of the project, its location, its orientation, all of that was in the packet that was provided to you ahead of time. The developer, Mr. O'Hagan, is here, he can provide you with an additional overview, answering questions you may have, if you have further suggestions for the project. This is a time when you can pose those to the developer. And if the board's permission, I'd invite Mr. O'Hagan up to provide some additional information.
Just make a quick, quick comment. One, the local initiative program is a very common one used across the Commonwealth, and this town has done other projects that are considered lips. And I would, just will note with Steve's leadership, there have been at least two meetings with the developer, and that, his presence here is a recognition that that team recommends that the board consider this this evening, so it isn't, this isn't the first discussion that we've had. There have been a few, I was involved in one, and I know Steve and the team had several conversations, so welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Mark O'Hagan of MCO and Associates, I'm actually located up in Harvard, Mass. So really, the bulk of my career has been focused on affordable housing. I've done 30 to 40 40Bs. Lately, I've been focused on projects that I'm calling cottage rentals. So as compared to larger, you know, these 200-unit projects and large buildings that look like they came out of space in small building, in small communities, building a series of smaller cottage homes. They range 800 to 1,400 square feet. What is proposed for this site, there's a combination of single units and some attached units, where I put garages in between for people. But overall, the acceptance for this type of product in communities has been really terrific. There's some imaging that I provided, I know there was, I think the packet was submitted that I can go through, talk a little more specifically about the site. It is a site that had been approved for affordable housing going back 20 years, I think in a couple of different variations. There was single-family homes on the whole site, then there was some apartments that were proposed. Then ultimately, part of it was developed with a solar field, which is existing. So this is the plan that was originally approved, I think this goes back to '02, '03. As, I know you guys have seen the product, but we're off of Snake Pond Road, there is, I've seen it as Farm View Drive and I think Green Something Else Drive on different maps. But, excuse me, coming off of Snake Pond Road, part of the road has been installed. This proposal, I think, was for 70-something, single-family homes. That was subsequently changed, if you want to shift to the next slide, I think it gives you a better sense of, this was the second variation, where they were going to have some homes along the front drive, then they were going to put in some larger buildings. This piece is directly next to the airport, so there was quite a kerfuffle over putting three, four-story buildings there. So that never happened. And then if you want to go one more slide, oh, another slide, those are the buildings. If you can keep going. And this is kind of where it exists today in the raw sense, that there are some lots that are approved, and there is a large solar field on the back. So the piece that would be developed, I think, is about 26 acres. The solar field is in another about 30 acres overall, there's about 60. I've agreed to buy the entire parcel, so there wouldn't be any confusion between different ownerships of the solar field. I know that the solar field is leased to the town, the power generated is leased to the town, this doesn't change anything. I'd be acquiring the land, there's a land lease as part of the contract, I think it's through a third party, so it wouldn't affect any relationship with the town in terms of power that you're getting from it. The lease, I think, goes for roughly another eight or nine years, and then there's another, there are two five-year extensions beyond that. So I would own it, control it, operate it, well, I don't really have to do much, which is the good news. But it would stay in common ownership, I think is the advantage, so there wouldn't be any confusion, so. So the site, this, oh, just getting to the good stuff. Not that I don't like the sheep, yeah. So this is the site. In the different variations that they've gone through, there is some habitat area out there. So there's a conservation management plan that is in effect on the site, which is effectively those yellow lines that you see. The upper section, closer to the main road, that is where the road is paved, really down to the, kind of the end of that first cluster of homes. Then there's a bit of a break, the road continues up exactly where it's shown on a gravel basis, to a large wooded plateau where we're showing the second zone of development, and then it goes into the solar field. So those areas were, you know, pretty naturally established as the development zone because of the road being up in the front. We obviously wanted to use that as a basis, so we've got a series of primarily the duplex structures with the garages in between. Really, just had my designer put together a creative layout that provides a different look and feel for the, you know, for the properties as you come through the streetscape. Some of them, we have the garages on the front, you'll see some that have the garages on the back. Incorporated a few single homes to break it up. You'll see some are along the street, others are pulled back to provide some pockets of open space, and again, to, you know, just kind of enhance the visual aspect of coming through it. As you get through the first cluster, it goes up gradient, really to kind of that second plateau. We had a little bit more flexibility in design, so created the, kind of that loop layout that you see. The center of that green space is also intended to be the leach field for the septic system. So we're able to get a little more separation for buildings. That green space becomes a nice focal point for the residents. We're actually able to pull off most of the parking around the island as well. And we can look a little more, if you go to the next slide, it goes a little more specifically into those zones. The overall project that's proposed is 60 units. This is on a septic system, and I know that there's talk in the future of tying into the treatment center at the base to have septic for that section of town, but right now, it's a septic system. So this was designed to stay below the 10,000-gallon system. We are literally just below the 10,000-gallon system, and that kind of dictates the unit mix. So we've got 36 one-bedrooms here. Those are the more smaller modest units of about 800, I think they're 780 square feet or so. With the garaging, we felt that was a really good fit, given the area, a lot of older people that might, you know, be wanting to downsize. Those cottages, they're all one-level living, so really simple, nice homes. They do have the attached garage, which I think will be a significant benefit for people. And given the orientation of the layout, again, where the road is existing, that was a better fit. So here, we've got predominantly the one-bedrooms, I think we've got eight two-bedroom structures that are in there, and I'll go through some of the different variations as it is, but you get a better sense of some of the green space that we've incorporated, trying to pull homes back off the street where we can to get the unit count and the unit mix that we were looking for. And we can talk a little bit more about the aesthetics. These homes all have, the bulk of these have the one-car garage, some of the singles don't. Every unit has parking for two spaces. I think we've got another 20 to 25 spaces, kind of scattered throughout the property, specifically designated for, you know, overflow visitor parking, and they're not all in one location. You can see, if you look kind of just to the left or below the street where we've got the green space, the backside of that, you know, you can see where we've identified, you know, four or five parking spaces that would be guest parking, available for people that live there. The driveways outside the garages are large enough to accommodate one in the garage and one outside the garage. So the focus is to not really have anybody parking on the main street. We don't think that, you know, we'll restrict it, but, you know, people often do what they do. But for a practical sense, we feel that we have a comfortable amount of loading throughout the project to deal with company, the occasional party, Thanksgiving, all bets are off, like any neighborhood, but from a day-to-day basis, I think you'll find that there's more than adequate parking there. These crosswalks are designed to be, you know, kind of the elevated speed bumps, it's a long, straight way, just to make sure to keep it safe for everybody that would be there. We'd incorporate that into the design. If we can shift to the next one. Again, a little more focus, here, we've got more of the detached cottages. These are cottages, very consistent in the package, and in slides, you see that I've built in other locations. Look and feel of them is a little bit different, more kind of, you know, red-yellow farmhouse. I've modified the designs to be capified a little bit down here. But again, so back here, there's more of two-bedrooms and three-bedrooms, but you can see we use the same duplexes for the one-bedrooms to kind of just keep a mix throughout the site for people. A little more privacy here for people, it's wooded around it. We had some additional space, so we could create the open space. You can see, we tried to maintain a pretty reasonable buffer between the backside of the houses and the solar field, you know, just for visually, and this is mostly, oh, sorry, you know, scrub pine stuff, so I think visually, it'll maintain a break from the solar field. We've got, you know, areas for mail stations and parking and such. So this is a two-bedroom bungalow that we call it, this is 1,150 square feet. Inside, it's a really comfortable layout, the windows on the second floor are really just for aesthetics. So here, kind of incorporated some traditional shingles... So here, kind of incorporated some traditional shingles on the front. But it's, if we go, I can see the floor plan on the next slide. Again, really open kitchen, living, dining area, two comfortable bedrooms, two full baths, broad front porch, really nice layout. I think the next slide is a version of it being, oh, I got pictures at the end of things being constructed. This is the two-bedroom cottage. Again, front porch focus. The goal's to get people out and about, talking with their neighbors. This is twelve hundred and ninety-six square feet, I think. Again, modest, charming cottage for people. Bedrooms on the second floor, living on the first. Again, a pretty comfortable layout. Floor plans here from another site. One and a half baths, you know, these, these were, these would be built on slab to be efficient. These would be all-electric homes, consistent with, you know, with all the environmental standards that everybody is, is looking for, heavily insulated. We need to comply with all the new regulations. So what's nice about the homes and some of the pictures is, they're, you know, they feel like homes. These are nine-foot ceilings on the first floor, full-size windows, trim, you know, kitchens are nicely appointed with islands, quartz countertops, shaker cabinets, really comfortable feel. So we can keep sliding through. More versions. This is a three-bedroom. This is the largest home, which is still only about fourteen hundred square feet. Similar design to the two-bedroom. We essentially added a master bedroom on the first floor. Again, we try to make the units to accommodate as many people as possible. So between the two bedrooms, we've got one level living. We should have the plans for the, for the one-bedrooms as well that people will see. But we've got a full master on the first floor, you know, nice, open kitchen, living, dining as well. And then upstairs, two additional bedrooms, and we actually have some storage in the back of this. But again, this is about fourteen hundred, fourteen oh eight, I think, is the, is the square footage. Ah, there it is. This is the one-bedroom unit. Like I said, this, this shows it with the garages on the front. We've got the orientation that shifts around in, in a number of different ways. Some of them has the parking on the back, so again, it would just change the street front. There's some of them, they have them, you know, with one, one facing the front, and then the garages in the back. And we'll have, you know, subtle different treatments, again, to just keep an interesting mix throughout the site. And the floor plan we can look at next. Again, very simple, really kitchen, island kitchen, open to living, dining area, broad front porch, nice walk-in closet for people. We have the garaging. We'll either have additional storage in the back of the garaging, or potentially, you know, kind of a, of a pull-down attic for some additional space. But again, all one living, one-level living, suitable for people that have concerns with stairs, suitable for handicapped people. One-bedroom's wonderful fit for, you know, whether it's singles, couples, that, that would have an interest in, in being in town. This is, on some of the, the two-bedrooms, we had some different versions of it. That's just showing the two bedrooms that we have attached. This is a cottage project that have recently finished up in Lancaster, Mass. And you'll see some images of the homes that are finished. You know, just an aerial view, again, kind of, this is a property that I acquired, that the roadway was installed as well. Seems to be my thing lately. So really, the central common, that isn't used for septic here as it, as it typically would because that's installed. But the main thing is to get separation. People feel like, you know, you're not, you know, you do have people adjacent to you, but with the front porches, you're really looking over a broad, you know, broad grassy area for the bulk of the homes. Here, we've got a mix of some driveways and parking areas, just a broad cul-de-sac in the back. This is thirty-two units. The ugly one in the middle was one home that was built. It's kind of a brown one at the end of the green that you see that I didn't build. Want to zip to the next slide. Again, just another overview. You can move through that. Colors are nice. This was the, the two-bedroom bungalow that was constructed. Here, again, we just had it as a white. I think some of the images that we saw, it had more of a shingle, shingle style in the front. Slide to the next one. This was the two-bedroom. Again, I had more of a barn-red colors. But we've got some details. We use some, you know, in some of the homes, we put metal roofs on the front porches. We've got the, you know, board and batten on the front and in the gables. Sometimes we do it on the side. So again, it provides some flexibility to, to keep the streetscape interesting. Yeah. So three-bedroom, just kind of a group of them. Keep going through. I think everybody gets the sense. Interior, as I said, these are nine-foot ceilings on the front, comfortable kitchens, you know, full-size windows, nice trim. You know, we do laminate flooring throughout. There's no carpet in them. Tile, nice fixtures. So most apartments you see these days are nicely finished. So that's just kind of give you an overview on the, on the project. For these sixty units, obviously, this would be done through the comprehensive permit, as Steve had mentioned. I'm guessing the board's familiar with it. I propose this as a LIP, meaning, you know, in the vernacular of a friendly comprehensive permit. Certainly want to work with the community on it. Twenty-five percent of the homes, so fifteen, would be designated as affordable. Those rents, I think, range from about eighteen hundred to twenty-two hundred, roughly. Oh, sorry about that. Yeah, the affordable rents would run from about eighteen hundred to twenty-one fifty for the, the one to three bedrooms. The market rents with the garaging, we're anticipating to be roughly three to four thousand between one-bedrooms to, to three bedrooms, which is expensive, but that's just what it is these days. Seventy percent of these homes can be, seventy percent of the affordables can be designated for local preference with the town's support, which I assume that there would be on that. Lottery would be distributed. I have a lottery firm. We do them all over the state, so we would work with the community on that to distribute them. And where these are rentals, even though they're detached, they would all count towards the town's housing inventory. So that's a significant advantage of the, of the rentals. So as part of the package, I had submitted the full copy of the LIP application. If the board was to support the project, I'd request the signature from the chief elected official. This would be submitted to EO HLC. They'll mess around with it for three months or four months and likely approve it, since that's what they exist for. During that time, I would do the more detailed engineering on the site and have had preliminary meetings with all the, the department heads and, you know, have some feedback. And there is town water here that would be utilized. It would be a septic system, as we had talked about. We will accommodate within the design the means to tie into the main road in the future. So whether we put our tanks down there and have a means to jump off them later, or if the, the tanks are further up and, you know, we put a, a force main to run it back in the future. So we will be prepared for that in the future, so we're not starting from scratch. Again, these would likely be all-electric from a design perspective, so relatively straightforward. There was testing that had been done out there before. It's the Cape. It's mostly sand. In talking with your border health agent, where this is located, and I don't want to overspeak because I just heard them, you know, talking about all the estuaries and stuff, a really, just a traditional septic system is all that is needed. Traditional large system, so there will be pre-treatment, but it being on the Cape, there's no additional treatment that's required, given the location and, and given the town's standing is my, is what I've been advised. The proposal as it is, we're staying within the confines of what had previously been established as the building zone, excuse me, as it relates to the conservation management plan. So that doesn't appear that that'll be a challenge. And again, the road's installed, power is installed, water is installed halfway up the project already. So it's, you know, it's a relatively simple site from a development perspective. The areas that we're building on are relatively modest. There's a slight grade on the road as it's coming in, but off of the side roads is, is pretty modest. So really, not a lot of heavy lifting from that perspective. I don't think we're impacting a butters. There's one home on the, you know, that kind of shares, their driveway, I think, is marginally on this road before it's gated. You know, we kept a little bit of a buffer from there. And then really, by the time where the bulk of the building is happening, we've gone beyond the other homes that are on the, the existing neighborhood behind it. So generally, I think that there'll be very little impacts. And when it's completed, these are all, you know, one-story, one-and-a-half-story homes, so not anything that anybody is going to see that I, I think would have any visual impact from them. So I've been advised that as I get it into town, there's some traffic issues, so we'll, you know, we'll take a look at that. I think that's about it. Like I said, this is, this is really what I, I do for a living. My focus is on the 40B. All of my work has, has pretty much been exclusively focused on affordable housing. So starting to, to venture down in, in different areas where most of my building before was up, you know, closer to where I live. I was building different types of products of for sale and things. Now with kind of the cottage rental, I'm expanding a little bit, but, so that's why I'm down here as compared to, to closer to home. But looking at some other things in the area, so hopefully I'll spend more time down here.
Thank you. And thank you to the board for your time. Mr. O'Hagan's been very responsive and very transparent to this point, so I think having more detail for the community to consider at the front end, I hope that was helpful.
Charlie?
Just, I think just really for the, for the public's benefit, it's important to know this is the first step in a lengthy process. And this is the select board agreeing that this is a project that the developer is responsive and responsible and one that we feel could carry out the project. The state then will evaluate that, make a determination whether it moves forward to a full review process, and that would require a permit from the zoning board of appeals. So this is just a first step in a lengthy process. And any of the details around, you know, any community impacts that are neighborhood-related or, or community concerns, those can have an opportunity to be, have a dialogue and a regulatory review with the zoning board of appeals. And it's, it's just important for people to know that.
And the state will seek comments from the town. They'll come out for a meeting, which would be open to the public as well, if people wanted to speak directly with the state agency. But I appreciate you putting that out. Yes, there will be a very detailed engineering pack, fully engineered package would be submitted to ZBA for review, peer review, engineering, however the town traditionally deals with it.
I have one question. In our cover here, it says sixty cottage-style homes. And in the packet, 2011, there was these three-floor style apartments. That's just a thought that's more-
No, any of, yeah, any of the, none of the previous projects. That was a previous submittal that I wasn't involved with.
Sixty.
Yeah, that was just to show the, the history of the site. But no, we're not proposing anything of those lines. Those permits are void, so we're starting from scratch, effectively. That's just to show that this, this has been considered and approved for affordable housing in the past.
I'm just not in favor of the three-floor big-
Yeah, next to the, next to the airport. I never understood that, but-
Okay, good.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. It's a, it's a lengthy process. And Steve, we appreciate you being involved in this at the outset, and we'll see where it goes. It, it, it is an interesting plan.
Okay, I like it.
We, so in order to go forward under the LIP, it would be helpful if the board would consider a motion, either to figure the project, or if you feel that more information or different information is required. There's a signature page that to go forward to the state, the applicant, the developer would need signed off on by the chair of the board, is representing the town, that the concept seems to be worth further development. And that would be the gateway for him to go forward with the state and do further engineering.
Right, but we're not approving anything except to continue the process.
That's correct.
Correct.
It's initiating the process.
Yeah, I'm sorry?
You're initiating the process.
Yes, okay.
And so if you, the, a motion could be to authorize the chair of the select board to execute a LIP application for the project.
And just to be a hundred percent clear, so, so we're basically endorsing the concept as something that is viable for the community. And then as the process moves forward, there will be the opportunity for community feedback in the form of public hearings and other things that will take place. So this is not a end-all decision to the project, because I suspect there are likely folks that want to provide their feedback and comments. And I, I would like to thank you for the thoroughness and level of detail that you brought forward tonight. It's very refreshing for a variety of reasons that I know my colleagues understand, so thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
And just for, and, you know, this is jokingly the Mike Miller question of the evening, is could you just, Steve, could you just explain the difference between when you do a 40B project where the developer has come to us for the LIP versus where they would, you know, more or less circumvent the town completely and go to the state and go through that process? And, you know, that this is involving the town versus, you know, just for everybody's, you know, edification at home, that that's a big difference between the-
Sure. Yeah, it's interesting. When you look at the state information, that they compare the two processes, sort of the conventional 40B with the LIP process, and the differences are very subtle. They're in sequence and timing more than anything else. The big factor is that the applicant, the town engages an applicant and cooperatively works up a project, or as in this instance, the applicant comes, or developer comes forward to the town with an idea, solicits input informally in advance, talks about what the town's needs are in terms of the affordable housing. Some of that's outlined in the staff letter, and then goes to the state. In the conventional 40B, a developer goes to the state first to get the site eligibility letter. And then they come back to the town with a list of waivers that they'd like to see if they need some lenience from the standard regulations that would apply. And so the flavor of its difference, really just the process and the good faith that's pretty much implicit in this process with initial cooperation and the initial, the idea of getting initial concurrence from the town to look into it further, rather than coming forward after the fact, after having the state, you know, behind a project saying it's, it's going to go forward and you guys have to make sure you can handle it without making it uneconomical. So this can also be a little more expeditious if, if the state board that reviews the application sticks to their intended envelope for reviews, sixty to ninety days, and then we'd be back with ZBA. That process would go forward just as a standard comprehensive permit, so not sure how long that would take. It would depend on the depth of issues that come up during further engineering and what comes forward from the community during the public hearing process. And there could still be waivers that are requested and granted. It's basically just a different tenor. Something show up on your doorstep that you then have to sort of fit back into the regulations.
This is some way old-school stuff, and Steve's explanation was absolutely accurate. But if you think about the subsidized housing inventory, and these are considered subsidized housing, and I think Mr. O'Hagan will probably remember this, that the LIP application was structured so that a developer didn't have to go to a lending agency to get a subsidy prior to going through what was then mass housing and the state. And the LIP application and the expedited permitting, which means that you're essentially endorsing the concept of the project, giving them a little bit more speed. And we agreed to a fairly swift permitting process through the LIP process, so that's considered a subsidy for the project. And that goes way back to the beginning of time. But it really is a very specific tool that developers can take advantage of. And it doesn't mean that if someone comes through a 40B process and isn't a LIP, that that's a bad process. It's just a different way to obtain the subsidy and a different way to develop the project. So this is one way. It looks like you have a favorable project here, and appreciate all the work Steve's done.
A lot of public input at the, at the planning and zoning aspect, right?
Okay.
I think we're all on the same page.
I think we're going to make a motion or anything?
Yeah. Yeah. I can make a motion that we recommend MCO associates move forward on the sixty-home development on Green Meadow Drive in Forestale.
Second?
Well, I would say the LIP application.
They're going to go through the application process, right?
Specifically the LIP application.
Authorize the chair to execute the application.
Has amended, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Motion by Mr. George, second and-
Modified.
Modified by Mr. Hockner, thank you. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Best wishes.
Appreciate it.
Best wishes. It looks great.
I'll be back.
Okay.
Thanks again.
Okay. Old business, special town meeting overview?
So very quickly, you all have reviewed and endorsed the warrant. I'll turn the sky off.
Yes, Ms. Harvick.
Okay, and just a quick update of the activities to date. The warrant has been sent to the printer. Our, our legacy printer has retired, we learned today, so we've got a new printer, which is great. Melissa's been working on that. Those will be ready well in time for town meeting, and we're really in the town meeting prep stage of things. The town manager did an overview of the warrant articles for Sandwich Community Television on Tuesday with LeAnn Drake, because the lion's share of these are land use articles. Today, myself and Ms. Drake did a Cape conversation with Melinda Galant for a little bit more outreach on, on the town meeting, which might not have a great draw to the community. There's no sort of heavy-hitting articles, but what's on here is really important to the community in terms of land use. It increases opportunity for people to expand how they use their property. It implements the short-term rental program, which you all know is essential to adopting, so that it's a use that's allowed by right, as well as some of the other initiatives that have been led by the board. So unless there are any specific questions, we are preparing for the moderators' meeting, which will be next week, and, and we'll might do a little bit more outreach to just engage the community in attending town meeting.
Heather, if I'm not mistaken, on this special town meeting, is that if we do not vote in the air, the quote-unquote, the short-term rental Airbnb rules, that they are excluded from usage in 2026?
That's correct. They would not be an allowed use within the town.
So for everybody that's at home that has a short-term rental, if we do not vote this through, there are no short-term rentals for 2026 unless something else changes.
And, you know, the really positive news, you heard from LeAnn, that they did do quite a bit of outreach to the community that has rentals, we're actively working with them on the regulatory process that Sandwich was one of the first communities in the state to embark on, which has really proven in our favor to get that done, even prior to the state issuing its regulations. So we have had that level of engagement with people along the way, so we're hoping they will turn out and vote affirmatively, and they are as light a regulation as we could implement and align with the state's guidance. And certainly, regulations can always be changed, and if we find more is needed, we can, we can do that with the approval of town meeting.
Select board authorization of town charter, special act language.
So that is not quite ready. Work was happening between Senate, two Senate councils and town council, Lauren Goldberg, as early as this morning. We did review some of the questions that Lauren had for us, myself, Bill Jennings, and Taylor White reviewed them all. All, we agree with all of her positions on that. So the town, Senate council wasn't prepared to have that ready for you this evening, but they will have that to us very shortly, and we should have the final recommended version that brings both the town clerk bylaw, the charter changes together, in one single change for you at the November 20th select board meeting.
Okay, so if I can...
We're getting there.
It this way, that we're tabling this until everybody's ready to proceed?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Other matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair. Under old business, I have none. Anybody else? New business, matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair. I have none. Anybody else? Okay, moving right along. Public comment. Closing remarks. As was indicated ear, ear, earlier, thank you very much, Mr. Sampson. There's a memorial and a tribute to our etirants to take place down in the park on 11/11 at 11:00, and all that should come together for all of us. And then, in the same scope then, please continue to maintain the situations in Eastern Europe, in the Middle East, and the threats to world peace, as well as those who have suffered here at home, in our thoughts and prayers. Anybody else?
Special town meeting, one week from Monday.
Yes.
7:00 PM.
Yes.
Sandwich Middle High School.
We had mentioned that ear, ear, earlier, but it...
We can't mention that enough.
Does it hurt to...
You know, it's a good note to end on.
Exactly right. It doesn't hurt to repeat certain things. Very important. Motion to adjourn?
Can I ask a question before you adjourn? We were considering doing an editorial or just a letter to the paper about the special town meeting, just to encourage people to attend. Does anyone have any concerns about that?
Which "we" are we talking about?
It'd be LeAnn and myself.
Who, you?
LeAnn and myself.
Sure.
Would anyone like to review it before we do? But we'll, of course, review it.
Okay.
I just didn't know if it was from us.
No, no, really just letting people know what's happening and that they should be there.
Okay. Okay, so the administrative staff will distribute the proposed...
Yes.
Article?
We can, certainly, yes.
Terrific, terrific. We'll be fine.
We'll issue a one-day liquor license with a cash bar.
Thank you very much.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockner. All those in favor?
Aye.
I will be reconvening here on Thursday, November 20th, at 6:00, 7:00 PM. Attend town meeting and observe etirants' day, please, and thank you.